in all content areas. The framework consists of five categories of AI integration from no AI to AI exploration. And you'll notice that the framework uses a neutral color palette, which moves away from the traffic light that some other districts are choosing to use. We want to ensure that through this visual guide, we emphasize that no category is inherently better than others, rather that it's based on the appropriate level depends on the specific learning outcomes and context in which AI can be used, which helps to maintain clarity and transparency. So if you look, you'll see at the top, you have no AI. No AI is where you will see where students are going to be asked to use and solely rely on their existing knowledge and understanding of skills to complete an assignment. This may be done in a controlled environment such as in the classroom. We move into AI planning, which is the green level band. This is where AI can be used for pre-task activities such as brainstorming, outlining, and initial research. And then we have AI collaboration, which you can use for generating and drafting ideas, looking for feedback. Moving into full AI, where students can use AI throughout the work directed to achieve whatever the assessment goals are or the assignment goals to solve problems and to generate ideas. And AI exploration encourages the creative use of AI to enhance problem solving and to generate novel ideas and to perhaps figure out on their own how students would like to expand or show that they have learned something. And this really allows for new ideas to be developed with teachers and students coming together. The framework isn't a prescriptive tool, but a starting point for educators to consider how to reform their assignments and helps us to acknowledge that AI is an established part of educational landscape and a structured way to engage in open dialogue with our students about the integration. By adopting this framework, we can move beyond simply augmenting existing practices, but towards transforming what we're doing with our students. And we've shared this out with all of our teachers. At the beginning of the school year, there were presentations given by technology facilitators on the opening two days of school as well as at faculty meetings. In addition, the language of our elementary student handbook and secondary handbooks have been updated to help demonstrate the philosophy that we have of Milburn, where you can see in the second part of it, teachers will tell students at the elementary level in advance if AI is permitted on an assignment. If a student should use AI when it's not allowed, the assignment may not reflect their progress towards the standard, and a teacher may ask a student to redo their work. At the high school level, we communicate our philosophy in the top section. And then the use of AI is if it is prohibited for a particular assignment, it must be communicated to students in advance. And if an assignment was prohibited to use AI, then the student would then look, the teacher would work with the student to make sure that we're not cheating or plagiarizing our work. So we really want to demonstrate to students that AI is a tool that they can use appropriately and properly so that when they move on to college and the next level beyond Milburn, that they are aware of how to use this powerful tool. So the district has a number of supported AI platforms that they are going to use with teachers and students. This includes Magic School, Gemini for Google Classroom, Newzella, Snorkel, Nearpod, Canva, EdPuzzle, Brisk Teaching, Kami, and Notebook LM. These different tools were selected because they are platforms that we already have purchased that have been integrating AI into them, as well as tools that were demonstrated through our pilot last spring that bring about the different aspects of the platform that teachers feel are necessary to work with with students. And so our next steps, I already mentioned to you that technology facilitators presented to school faculty to share about the Milburn AI framework. And that was done on August 28th, September 4th, and then also today on September 8th. On September 15th, the tech facilitators, as well as myself, this is Lisa Nida, Katie Natuzzi, and then Danielle Green from the middle school. We will be doing a train the trainer for all administrators as well as a select group of teachers that are AI leaders. And then that training will then be turnkeyed to all staff on October 13th, which is a delayed opening day. And this will be facilitated by our technology facilitators throughout the district as well as administrators, where teachers will learn a little bit more about the supported platforms that we're using for AI. And then from there, we'll break into grade level and department groups so that we can better understand how AI fits into each of those grade levels so that we have a consistent understanding across the district. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for the great presentation. And, you know, I would observe that all organizations around the country and the world are actually grappling with this issue of AI. What does it mean? How do we use it? Is it helpful? Is it harmful? So, you know, I applaud the district for taking this on. What I really like is the flexibility of the framework. What I have seen, excuse me, in other organizations, they're kind of, they pick one model. They're like, we're all in, like it's all AI, or we're very cautious. What I like here is you have a situational framework that based on the situation, you could be no AI or you could be full AI. What I would ask is this technology is evolving very rapidly. So let's, and I know you're constantly monitoring it, looking at, you know, the feedback from the students and the teachers. It's a great flexible framework. We got to stay on top of it. And I applaud yourself and the team for working on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Shavani?
Just thanks for the great presentation. I'll echo everything that Mr. Farshidin said. I think just one feedback that probably might be helpful is I think we might need more trainings and professional development for the teachers and staff because this is a lot and it's a lot, and I know it's.
And this is just the beginning. So after October 13th, this will not be the only time that we see professional development. Each of the buildings has a technology facilitator that is going to be receiving training and they will have additional resources that they can use with the teachers, including meeting with the different vendors that are, that we use within the district to make sure that we are consistently helping to support teachers so that they can support students.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I would hope you continue to showcase successes in AI in the classroom or whatever. It would be great if Milburn came to be known as a leader in that space.
That's the goal. Thank you. If I can use this mic, it'd be easier. I'd like to welcome up John Connolly, who's going to talk about our high school and our
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me up here. And I just want to update us on our grading and assessment progress through some of our initiatives through the 2024-25 school year. When we look back at district goal two, teaching, learning, and assessment, which was a major focus of 2024-25, particularly in the secondary level, to promote and collaborative teaching, learning, and assessment environment that inspires creativity, innovation, and differentiation to support all learners with an objective to ensure our assessment and grading practices foster growth, a growth mindset, ensuring they reflect students' potential to achieve at or above proficiency levels, consistent with the high standards of Milburn Township Public Schools. That is a mouthful. That was a big undertaking. It was a big task for our staff. And I'm proud to stand here today to kind of highlight some of the things that we did really well, the ongoing work that we did and where we look to go in the future. Some of the action steps that took place during 2425 were the implementation of a 50, 50, a floor of 50 as far as our grading scale or otherwise known as a 50 to 100-point grading scale. And this was the idea to give students the opportunity to climb out of that poor assessment that they may have gotten along the way. Implement protocols. By the way, the green checks represent things that we've done or have completed during this time. Implementation of protocols for reassessment opportunities. We had the development of the assessment and grading guidelines, which was a guiding document, a living document that evolved over the course of the summer of '24, and then took on some revisions throughout the 2425 school year. We had an analysis of the impact of all the grading and assessment guidelines and on student performance. That's ongoing, and I think you'll see some of that analysis taking place in this presentation today. The review and update of assessments relative to standards and instruction. One of the big things that we took on last year was really looking at the final exams, the assessment design, the assessment alignment to standards and curriculum, and the duration in which students would be sitting for any one of these assessments. So how did we do? Well, so this is a look back and an analysis of our grading scale. We took it to C-, but for 2324 school year versus the 2425 school year. And as you can see, there was some great gains that we've made. And I think your eyes tend to go to where the As are. My eyes really tend to go to where we pulled students from the C range and we pulled them into the B range, and we pulled those students from the B range into the A range. And to me, that's where our greatest work was done. So, you know, this is, this is really just some tremendous impact. I think when you, you know, you look at the English department and you look at the work that was done in the English department, the number of As was so low in that particular department for varying reasons, that that's why you see such a number that's so high, particularly there. And then we did, you know, I did break down the data a little bit into, you know, our core classes in our freshman and sophomore years, Excel, CPB, and CPA. We saw tremendous gains in those classes, but there's still some work to be done. And again, it's not just about the A, it's about pulling all those students through, the students that were in that C range and pulling them into the B range, which aligns very much with what the board's goal was, or the district's goal was to bring students to proficiency. And we're pulling those students forward into that proficiency, into that proficiency range with ultimately the goal for students to be able to represent how their true potential academically here in a very rigorous academic environment. Some additional action steps that support all this work were the realignment of the district administration to support evolving curricular instructional needs as new programs evolved, pathways, initiatives that were underway through the program committee, through each of the schools around the district. So that realignment really has provided a structure to help support not only the curriculum instruction needs, but the teacher needs as well as that which then dials down and drills down into supporting students. The course progressions and pathways were updated to increase student accessibility to accelerated classes. We've created more pathways and we've created more, you know, even more than just the pathways. The on-ramps at different points has been one of the key things and one of the key focuses for any of these pathways is to create opportunities for students to onboard to these higher-level course pathways without feeling that they need to be in that accelerated path from the very beginning. And that was one of the challenges that we've created and one of the opportunities that we've done. We've also lifted the AP waiting cap and provided students that are taking those AP courses with the opportunity to receive the credit that they have earned as part of taking an AP. And that started in September 2025, the beginning of the school year. We also adjusted our GPA requirement and is now inclusive of ninth grade grades, starting with this class of 2029. That also made room for us to bring on an AP course in the ninth grade level. And as we begin to expand the opportunities for students to be exposed to some of these AP level courses at different points in their career, maybe earlier than they previously had the ability to, this allows that to then build onto their GPA and help them to build that academic profile that they want to put forth for potential colleges to see. The adjustment of summer AP assignments and deadlines, you know, that was really more of an SEL thing, giving students the opportunity to, you know, still enjoy their summer without impacting our AP program and its integrity. But we did want students not to be locked into, you know, a July 31st deadline and giving them the opportunity to utilize the summer so that, you know, summer vacations and family plans and camps and things like that could still take place. And students can get the experiences and the learning opportunities that take place in those particular types of non-school events while still having the opportunity to afford themselves the AP summer work in preparation for the upcoming school year. The expansion of the AP access to underclassmen, I talked a little bit about the GPA, but we added the AP World History for Ninth Graders, which is a great opportunity and again allows students to have that exposure a little bit earlier. That was a pilot this year. We'll begin to expand that access even more so in future years. And then we added additional AP coordinators. We did see an increase in our AP enrollment. And so as a result, we added an additional AP coordinator through the support of the Board of Education and the high school's budget. We were able to make that available and, you know, to begin to better accommodate our students and the needs that they have as part of the responsibilities that are associated with those positions. And some additional actions still ongoing. We have expanded AP access, as I mentioned. The dual enrollment opportunities are well underway. I know we've talked a lot about that. We do have in draft form, we've got some memorandum of agreements for Syracuse University or the SUPA program, which we spoke about, I guess, probably in February last year. Seton Hall University and NJIT, these will be opportunities for students to expand their offerings. And these are, you know, these are going to touch a different type of student. It's not necessarily that student that would be looking at an AP, but it's creating these other opportunities for students to have that college-level experience in a high school. And one of just one of the great things about Syracuse University SUPA program, they have a great incentive, which allows for students that have taken a certain amount of courses in the SUPA program to, you know, have more of an advantage to the acceptance to Syracuse University. So we're very excited about, you know, onboarding the dual enrollment program and also then beginning to build that out as the opportunities and the interest drives. The analysis of the Milburn Middle School placement process for accelerated classes. This has been, this was one of our summer tasks. We have been working very hard on this and look to roll out a new opportunity for students to enter into these accelerated classes with some new criteria set up, which is more expanded and should expand the offering for more students and give more pathways into those opportunities. And that we look to have in place for '26-'27, which means that will be rolled out at some point this fall so that parents and students have all the information they need to make the right decisions along the way for the upcoming school year in '26-'27. And then obviously, we just learned a lot about our AI framework and how that integrates into all of this and how we're using AI to support our instruction, our teaching, our learning, our assessment practices, and everything else. So there has been a lot that's been going on that's kind of played into, you know, how we've supported the grading and assessment practices and programs along the way. So, you know, we're going to recycle a slide that Dr. Diskin used last year because I think it really tells the story, right? We all hope that success is going to be that straight, perfect line, but it's, it never is. And it is truly a work in progress. And the path to get to where we need to be does need to take some bends and twists and turns in order for us to get there. And I do feel that the grading and assessment process has been that way. It's been a lot of iterations. It's been a lot of work. And, you know, we could not have done any of this without our teachers, their dedication, their professionalism, their flexibility, their patience along the way. They have really made this happen. So we need to applaud our teachers for that. And it's definitely been that curvy road for them, so without a doubt. So where do we go next? You know, we definitely see the value in students having the opportunity to demonstrate their growth through corrections and second chances. There has been a change in our student and that profile. The goal is to emphasize students meeting or exceeding the proficiency level. That has been defined by the Board of Education and has been a guiding principle through the assessment and grading guidelines. We will continue to meet with the representatives, our teachers at the high school to understand and evaluate the impact, not only from a data standpoint, but just anecdotally, what are they seeing in the classroom and what do we need to do to make some change if necessary? We need to use the data to evaluate that short and long-term impact. That is one of the main reasons why we did not make any changes this year for this upcoming year. We are only one year through and we really do need to see what the placement looks like and how students are performing based on the impact of some of these, the grading and assessment guidelines. Where appropriate, we'll examine potential areas for improvement and needs of our students while supporting our teachers and maintaining the integrity of our instruction and our grading framework. That is so important. So this is an iterative process, and I do believe that this will be, you know, we will have the ability to make some tweaks and adjustments along the way. But I think at a core value, we really do see the value in opportunities where students may not have done as well. And do we need to rethink where, you know, our instruction was or our curriculum was at the time and assess that? So kudos to the work that was done, not only by the program committee and the CNI team, but the teachers as well. They really made this all come to fruition. So I just want to transition a little bit into just a little summary or an update on how we did AP-wise. And this does really tie into, you know, our grading and assessment guidelines and what the impact was. Because as we let more students in and we allowed for more students to have second-chance opportunities to demonstrate their potential, one would say if a student didn't know the information, they wouldn't necessarily perform on the AP assessment at the end. And, you know, I think we have some data here that shows that our students did pretty well across the board. And so when you, so what you're looking at here is really a table that represents our AP courses. Now, some in the audience will say, well, why is there some blacked out? So those are where the end sizes are below 10. And so we do not want to have that personally identifiable information for those students in those classes. But what we do have is, you know, looking at the grand scheme of things and what we have here, we've got roughly 88% of our students scored a four or a five. That's pretty amazing. When you look at just fives alone, 63.6% of our students scored a five and 24% scoring in the four range. So our students did really well across the board. Is there pockets in here to grow? Absolutely. Is there spots where we need to, you know, we would love to see it bolstered up a bit? Absolutely. But when we look at this holistically, we look at it, you know, from the impact, our students did continue to do very well. When you look at this table, this shows students that scored a four or five and had a 90% in the class. And this was a point that was raised in previous years about how could our students, you know, get a four or five on the test and only get a B in the class? Well, here, this represents how our students did collectively across the board. And 80% of our students scored a 90 or better and got a four or a five on the test. I think that's a pretty good showing. Again, can we, can we build on this? Absolutely. But our students are performing very well on these assessments. So here's a four-year comparison of our AP scores. It's broken down, the rose-colored columns in each of the, in the four, the 5, 4, 3, 2, 1 across the top represents the score on the AP assessment. This also includes students who self-studied. So that's really an important piece to remember. But you can, you know, you see two things that come out that jump off the table on here. One, you see our numbers in the four and the five and the three, the four and the five range are growing. And you also see our enrollment numbers growing, right? And the number of students sitting for the tests. So when you take, you know, tests taken over a two, a three-year period, if you want to look at the three-year growth, it was a 47.8% growth in tests taken. That's pretty amazing. It's a, it's a lot of students taking some AP tests. The far majority are students that were sitting for the classes. And so, you know, some of that comes from the increased accessibility that we've provided over the course of that four-year period. And some of that comes from students that are, you know, taking assessments and not taking the class at Milburn High School. And then, you know, we further break that down a little bit more. MHS enrollment, when we look at, you know, a two-year period here, we had a 65% growth between 2023 and the enrollment of 2025. But you just look at the numbers, 1432 in 2023 to 20 to 2375, we're going to be knocking on the door of somewhere around 2,400 AP tests come the springtime. So with this comes some challenges, right? We need to think about how we're going to schedule our students. We need to think about, you know, materials that are needed. And we also need to kind of continue to look at how our students are performing, right? And how they're performing on the assessments and things. And again, this is where this all ties into our, you know, our grading and assessment and the monitoring and the impact, not only long-term but short-term. So then, you know, now we kind of, we're back into 2025, 26, and we talk about, you know, our goal for goal three. And this all, you know, really does tie into our academic culture and climate goal, goal number three. And by June of '26, the district will enhance the academic culture and climate through equitable access, collaborative learning, SEL integration, as evidenced by, we're looking at the middle school data and the performance, we're evaluating the alignment between both the middle school and the high, and the high school as a secondary unit as opposed to two independent programs, the evaluation and recommendation of AP electives as we continue to make more offerings available for students and looking at the criteria and are there roadblocks for students to be able to have those opportunities? The development of an elementary initiative called the Win Period, What I Need Period in all of our elementary schools. And the development of our counseling framework and SEL district-wide programming that we're, you know, we've invested so much in this new model with the addition of a director of counseling and also with our guidance counselors in the elementary school. So we are very excited. There's a lot of work to be done here and a lot of work to continue and build on off of last year's. And I think that this kind of builds into that, you know, that whole strategic mindset that last year's goal really ties into this year's goal. And we're thinking, you know, building on what we've done from one year to the next. And then just lastly, I really just want to, you know, I presented some private school data in the, in the springtime, and we did have some updates as we closed out the 25 or the 2425 school year. And I just want to, you know, note that we did have a decrease in, you know, private school withdrawals in 2425. We had 63 drop out, you know, not return to Milburn Township Public Schools where at the end of this year, we only had 35 not returning from that eighth grade class. We also saw a decline in from fifth grade to sixth grade, God bless you. And we saw a small decline there as well. So, you know, we hope that we're trending in the right direction as a district and a philosophy and that we were able to maintain as many students as we can because we do have a tremendous academic program and school system that can support the Milburn Short Hills community. So with that, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take a question or two regarding all that.
Who wants to start?
Mr. Fergie.
I'll start. First of all, thank you to the program committee for the tireless work, the administration, and of course, all of our teachers. A couple of observations. 88% of Melbourne High School students, almost 90%, got an AP grade of four or a five. I want to read what the college board says. An AP score of five is a college A plus or an A in a college course. An AP score of four is a college course A minus or B plus. So realize this is what our kids are doing. I want to talk about the retest. There's a lot of, there have been some comments and concerns on retests. Retesting means going back and learning and gaining proficiency on what you missed the first time. Okay? It's that simple. And because of that, we have these amazing AP results. You know where they do retest? Stanford University. Okay? So if it works for them, it's good enough for Melbourne. And then finally, this is about all students. We want all students to challenge themselves, to take an AP or two. It's not just for the elite kids. AP classes, Excel classes are for all Melbourne students. Push yourself, try it, you can always drop it. You're gonna, you know, if you wore a card, you're gonna have a chance. If you have a bad day, you can do a retest. This is about opportunity for every Melbourne student. And I really want to thank the teachers and the administration program committee for making that happen. Thank you.
Andrew?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Connolly for the presentation. I do think Mr. Connolly deserves a shout out as well for taking the mantle as Assistant Superintendent and spearheading some of the curriculum. Great work that Dr. Diskin started and then leading the CNI team, who have been incredibly helpful, the whole, and the new supervisors, and then the teachers and the staffs at all the different schools. But bringing a lot of these agenda items forward, working really tirelessly through the summer, as Mr. Connolly mentioned, but it's been a lot of hard work from the administration side, as he mentioned, as well as the teachers that are, but they deserve a shout out as well for really being organized and on top of it and focused. And then getting feedback from all the various parties. It's a whole process. You know, it's hard to see it from the outside sometimes, but it's a lengthy process of getting feedback and pulling this all together. So, you know, just thank you to, to, for you, to you and to the team for, for all the great efforts there. And it's great to see. And, and the list of upcoming things, as you mentioned, are exciting. From middle school placement to additional AP access, while 30% growth on 30% growth is amazing. So incredible access, we've already expanded. And then to think that we're going to do even more is, is really phenomenal. So, so looking forward to, to all that is to come. But thank you for all the work.
Ms. Bethina?
I just want to not forget to thank chairperson, Mr. Finkelstein, who brought a lot of the ideas. So let's not forget to give him a big shout out.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes, thanks again to everyone, Mr. Connolly, the teachers and administrators. I do want to mention that, you know, obviously last year, we've seen a lot of change. I just want to say that we are using data to inform our decisions and to validate our decisions as well. We're not just saying that, oh, let's do this and not looking back. So I think this level of availability of data, this level of transparency, I don't think we, I mean, Mr. Finkelstein and I actually tried to scour a lot of websites to see if other schools are reporting this level of data. I don't think anyone is. So I think it's, it's a great thing that Melbourne is being the leader in sharing the data, looking at the data and using data to make informed decisions as well. So applaud you for that.
Yeah, you can't find the data on anybody's website, not, not to the extent that we're drilling down and looking at it and talking about it, which I think is, is a good, is a good thing, right?
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes, adding my thanks. I know, I think everyone should know that we had a meeting on Friday with some of these numbers. And then over the weekend, Mr. Connolly was still sending us numbers and doing that work. So I think everyone should know that he's just very committed to this. So, so thank you, Mr. Connolly. One quick, I think this sort of is, is part of this, but also the AI. I did want to give a teacher shout out. As a teacher myself, who is wading through the AI world, I know it's really tricky and it's something that we're all trying to sort of learn and how best to use and not to fall into any of the pitfalls, which I think we can fall. So I just did want to give a teacher shout out on the, the whole learning the AI world thing because it's, it is, it's a lot. It's a lot for, for us to learn as well, especially those of us who used to sort of older methods, right? So that's that. And my last comment is on dual enrollment because I'm not sure if that really stands out to as many people as it really stands out to me. But for a student to be able to take a college level class and get both college credit and high school state standard credit for that course, I think is huge and it's a real game changer for a lot of our kids. So I just wanted to say how excited I am about that dual enrollment program. And it will be rolled out, Mr. Connolly, right? And starting next fall?
Yeah, our, we anticipate that being in the course, the program of study or the course catalog for this, when we roll that out for next year. And, you know, those offerings should be laid out in there and will be, you know, be part of our budget process and, you know, trying to include as much as we can in that, so.
A lot of exciting stuff. Thanks so much.
I just want to give a quick shout out to the curriculum department. They really, you know, in addition to the teachers, they're the ones that are, you know, really working with the teachers and driving a lot of these initiatives. So thank you to all of them. All right, thank you.
I had a question. Mr. Connolly, you running away from me? I had a question. That was a minor one, but since you went away, I'm gonna ask it. I thought somewhere in there, you said that we did 2375 AP exams. You expect to hit 2,400 this year, which is not that big of an increase. Do you see that leveling off? I would expect it to have jumped even more. And then I know in the past, we've had issues about space and whatever. You hired an AP coordinator to help with those tests, which is utterly fantastic. But maybe just talk a little about, about that, make sure I have it right.
Yeah, no, just, I mean, so I think we're going to hit 2,400 pretty easily. It's a matter of, I mean, it's, the X factor is how many students are going to enroll in an AP test that are not seated in a seat. Though that 2,300 represents students sitting in a seat this fall. So, you know, that's a lot of AP classes, that's a lot of AP tests. So we'll see, you know, that number and see how we do with, you know, the enrollment. But we're going to have some challenges that are associated with this, with seats and with, you know, with, with classes and things like that. That's going to be something we have to, I think I mentioned a little bit about the scheduling of things. We're just gonna, it's gonna have to be a part of, something we're very cognizant of moving forward.
Yeah, that's essentially the question. Is there anything we can be doing now to make sure everyone gets seated who needs to be?
Those two AP coordinators need to be on it, absolutely. And we'll make sure they are.
All right, well, thank you so much for the, the presentation and all the work. The transparency is fantastic for the public, I think.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, board president's report. Not too much from me. Certainly thank you for everyone coming out tonight. It's great to see some teachers here. I understand it's just, they're coming out more to, to be here, not to actually yell at us for, for something. So I hope it's an ongoing thing and improving of relations. So utterly fantastic to see the teachers here. I know you have your own lives, your own families, stuff to do. So it's a meaningful commitment to our schools, school. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, given that we're back to school, safety to me is the number one issue. Traffic around any school before and after is just a nightmare. There are so many kids walking all over the place. So just please, all parents, all residents, just plan in an extra five, 10 minutes if you're going anywhere near the schools to be extra cognizant of that. And the one thing I'm hearing more and more, particularly after school, is about the electric scooters. The kids are not only riding to school, but riding around after school. And I'd ask the parents to just talk to your children about safety procedures of those, make sure they're riding in the great spots. And also not only to put their helmet on, half the kids I see don't do the chin strap, which to me is not that useful. So maybe that extra little note to those of you that have the electric scooters. I think that's all for me this evening. Dr. Diskin?
All right, thank you. You know, as I mentioned when we opened, we've had truly a wonderful start to the school year. And the short little slideshow represents the joy on the students' faces as they return to the classrooms greeted by the enthusiasm of our teachers. The dedication of the staff has been completely inspiring. I want to thank all the administrators and the principals and everyone for being out and about in the schools for the, for the week and, you know, helping with Carline and doing all those fun things. It was really a very, very smooth opening. And I just hope that as we continue this fall, we continue to carry that same joy, that same purpose and that momentum into all that we do. I do want to mention, as we're required, we have our Q Sac update, which is to let you know that we have passed the Q Sac, which is the standard quality assessment for the district. We have received scores from 90 to 100 on each of the five compliance areas. Instruction and program, 90%. Fiscal management, 100%. Governance, 100%. Operations, 100%. And personnel, 94%. In order to pass Q Sac, the state requires a score of 80% or higher in each area to be considered high performing. I'd like to congratulate all of our administrators, our Ed Center executives and administrative assistants, the schools, custodial staff, everyone for their efforts in this county compliance project.
No retest?
No retest, no, no, no redos next year. We didn't need one. On a, on another note, on Thursday, we do commemorate the 24th anniversary of the September 11th attacks. And on this day, we remember that nearly 3,000 lives lost and the heroism of our first responders. The day stands as a solemn reminder of the resilience and the unity that emerged from this tragedy, inspiring us to foster peace and understanding in our world. Again, I'm going to reiterate Mr. Heinrich's request for safety. As students ride to and from school, please remember to be extra cautious. Again, we had a pedestrian safety meeting with the police department in the town. Whether it's a bicycle, an e-bike, an electric scooter, remind your students to go slow. You yourselves, as you're driving, go slow near pedestrians. You notice the town has the, the lights where you can push them so that they blink. Remember to slow down and to stop and be cognizant of those that are relatively new to us. Remind your students to wear a safety helmet. From a personal experience, I will tell you that my son in middle school got hit by a truck going to school on his bike. He did have a helmet, but he still sustained injuries that had he not been wearing a helmet, he would not perhaps be here. So please check out your principal's emails, also regarding drop off and safety procedures. The police department, and we work with the town. It will be posted for New Jersey's e-bike and e-scooter law that will be posted on our website. It does talk about what the rules are. Please, as pedestrians or as drivers, we need to be aware of what those rules are. So they will be posted. I also, in the interest of safety, have a notice from the Melbourne Township Police Department regarding the milling and paving projects that are ongoing in the township. They've adjusted some of the start times for those construction projects, street closures to allow buses to continue their regular route. However, there will be certain times when buses might have to follow a detour. So we will make sure that our drivers are aware of those construction zones. However, we also need to know that that work started today and will go through the end of the month. And some of the affected roads are Rolling Hill, Sylvan, Holly, Hickory, Westville, Long Hill, Oswego, Deer Path, Cayuga, Tyoga Pass, and near Fairfield and Farley. So I just wanted to add that to my report. And then finally, our new formats for our superintendent and principal updates were created through Smore and enhanced the visibility and the communication within our school communities. They've been getting rave reviews. Thank you to Terry Heck for helping put those together and to keeping us all on track. Back to school nights upcoming, back to school nights this week are Glenwood, Hartshorn and Wyoming on the ninth and Deerfield on the 10th. And we welcome everyone to join. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Diskin. Moving on to board committee reports program, Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes, thanks. We had, we had three meetings to go through. The first meeting was Thursday, August 21st at 2:00 PM. Board members present were myself, Ms. Longley Richards, Mr. Bigman and Ms. Bethina. Staff present were Dr. Diskin, Mr. Connolly, Ms. Young, Ms. Martin, Ms. Graff, Ms. Abrams, Ms. Alvarez from Guidance and, and Ms. Soa. The committee first heard a draft of the AI framework presentation we all heard tonight. Then Mr. Connolly led a discussion of potential changes to middle school accelerated placement, which was mentioned in Mr. Connolly's presentation as well tonight. And then Ms. Alvarez was invited to the committee to provide an update and an introduction on some of the new initiatives happening in the guidance department. And these included the dual enrollment program and other counseling changes. The next meeting was Thursday, August 28th at 2:00 PM. This was a shorter meeting attended by myself, Ms. Longley Richards, Ms. Shavani and Mr. Bigman. Staff present were Dr. Diskin and Mr. Connolly. Mr. Connolly provided an update on the finals, finals and midterms policy discussions at the high school. And then there was an update of syllabi and lesson plan frameworks that were being implemented throughout the district. And then finally, our meeting on Friday, September 5th at 2:00 PM. Board members present were myself, Ms. Longley Richards, Ms. Shavani and Ms. Bethina. Staff present were Dr. Diskin, Mr. Connolly, Ms. Young, Ms. Martin, Ms. Graff, Ms. Abrams, Ms. Alvarez and Ms. Soa. Mr. Connolly reviewed an updated version of the AI framework with Ms. Young. Mr. Connolly then presented a draft of the grading presentation also viewed tonight at the meeting. The committee provided feedback and asked questions for some follow ups at that meeting, during that presentation, sorry. Ms. Alvarez and Ms. Soa then discussed the high school profile and some potential changes. The committee provided feedback on some of those ideas. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for program? All right, moving on to governance, Ms. Shavani?
Okay, so the governance committee met on Wednesday, September 3rd at 6:00 PM. Board members present were Ms. Jennifer Patina, myself and Mr. Brian Lawrence. Staff present were Ms. Terry Heck, Mr. John Connolly and Dr. Kate Diskin. The committee reviewed the following policies, which are being presented for first reading tonight. 163.01, this is a new policy regarding notification of promotion, new job and transfer opportunities to Melbourne staff. Policy 5430, class rank. This policy was revised, as alluded to by Mr. Connolly earlier in his presentation, to include grades from freshmen through first semester of senior year in the weighted GPA calculation for students graduating in 2029 and beyond. There are no changes for students in the class of 2026, 27, 28. The following two policies are being presented for second reading. 0143, board member election appointment. 01642, standing rules of the Board of Education. This was updated to revise the meeting start time to 7:00 PM. The committee also reviewed the personnel report, which will be presented later this evening for approval. The meeting concluded at 7:00 PM. I also want to remind everyone, because we do an update with Ms. Terry Heck as well in these meetings. So I want to remind everyone of the great work that Ms. Terry Heck and her, and her team have done with regards to the new website. I especially find the chat bot very helpful, particularly for quick questions like school start, holidays, back to school nights. You just ask a question and it gives you the answer. You don't have to go through WhatsApp or calendars or websites and things like that. So that's really, I'd request everyone to take advantage of the new website and the new features. Thank you. Priya Shavani?
Any questions for governance? All right, that's all the committee reports, administrator reports. You have something for us this evening, Mr. Connolly?
I do.
Please take it away.
Good evening, everyone. State testing update, this fall, testing will be held for students new to New Jersey, those retaking the assessment or those who missed the March 2024 New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, otherwise known as NJGPA. The NJGPA typically taken in junior year is a graduation requirement and measures proficiency in English, language arts and mathematics. Looking ahead to the spring, students will participate in the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, or otherwise known as the NJSLA, which measures academic growth and guides instruction. Starting this year, ELA and math will be administered in a new adaptive format, while science will remain unchanged. To support the transition, field testing will take place from October to early November. Our district is committed to keeping families informed. Testing dates, requirements and resources are available on the district website. And updates will be shared in the superintendent's weekly email. Thank you for your continued support. Rocktoberfest is upon us. It'll take place this Saturday on September 13th, 2025. Check out the sign in the back there. We look forward to seeing our Melbourne community at Rocktoberfest this Saturday, September 13th, from 12 to 10:00 PM at Taylor Park. This music and arts festival is a huge fundraiser for the Melbourne Education Foundation and promises to be a lot of fun for the whole family. And a quick athletics. And a quick athletics update, football is 2-0, victory over Pingree, 42 to 27. Senior Zach Ornstein ran for 191 yards and five TDs. That's a lot of yards and a lot of TDs, more than the Giants. Senior quarterback PJ Sikoli ran for 133 yards and threw for one TD. Senior Will Dietrich led the defense with six tackles. They also had a victory over Barringer, 34 to 18. Zach Ornstein ran for 75 yards and two TDs. Senior QB PJ Sikoli ran for 151 yards and three TDs. And junior Troy Chestain led the defense with six tackles. And then on the girls' tennis front, the preseason ranked number 11. They are 3-0, victories over Montville, 4-1, Montclair, 4-1, and Caldwell, 5-0. Freshman Alyssa Maharon picked up three victories at second singles. And that concludes my report. Congratulations to everybody and...
Joe Millers.
Joe Millers, right.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Moving on, do you have a report, Mr. Tar?
Just nothing formal, but echoing the opening of school where the facilities were all ready, transportation and food service went out with no issues, no atypical issues, and the auditors are currently in district.
Fantastic, thank you. Moving on to public comments. Please state your name and address for the record. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Responses to questions and comments will be posted to the district website for the next board meeting and within 10 school days. Oh, I'm looking over there. The podium's over there.
Check, check.
Thank you. Danielle Green, MEA president. Good evening, members of the board, administration, staff, and students in the Milburn community. My name is Danielle Green. I'm honored to stand here tonight as the new president of the MEA, Milburn Education Association. I would also like to introduce Leah Monaco, our new vice president. As we begin this school year, there are many district goals, initiatives, expectations, and changes across our district. We acknowledge transitions are never easy, but I want to take a moment to recognize and thank the staff for a smooth opening to our schools. Many of them are here tonight, so again, thank you. Despite, bless you. Despite some challenges, our teachers and educational staff have approached this year with professionalism, care, and a willingness to embrace the work ahead for the benefit of our students. You may notice in weeks ahead, the staff members wearing MEA teal shirts, as you can see, or just MEA gear in general. I do want to note, this is not to set a negative message, nor is it intend to reflect any discontent. It is rather a symbol of unity and community building among our colleagues, a way for us to show support for one another and to remind ourselves that we are in this together. So if you happen to see a teacher in a teal shirt or MEA gear, please say hi. I also want to highlight something important that happened this evening. Leah Monaco and I had a positive and constructive interaction with the current board president and vice president. We're encouraged by the spirit of collaboration, and we're hopeful that this sets the tone for a year of open communication, mutual respect, and positive relationships between the board, administration, and MEA. As president, I believe strongly when educators, administrators, and the board members work together, our students are the ones who benefit the most. I look forward to building on this shared commitment and keeping our students at the center of all we do. Thank you for your time, and I wish everyone a successful, productive, and positive school year.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Welcome to Rocktoberfest. I'm Joanna Parker Lentz. I'm wondering if we could have shared time, our two minutes together, and combine. So I just would like to thank everybody. Actually, McCall's supposed to thank everybody, so you start.
Okay. Just wanted to start by thanking Superintendent Kate Diskin and Assistant Superintendent John Connolly for really going above board and being so supportive of our event and of Ed Foundation in general. So we really thank you for that. Then I wanted to go ahead and thank some members of the Board of Ed. So firstly, Cynthia, because we couldn't do it without you. Cynthia is one of our co-chairs and runs music. So it wouldn't be Rocktoberfest without music. Thank you, Cynthia. And then Noel Bigman, who's stepped up for the second time this year. So thank you so much for helping us with the Kid Zone.
You're officially a clone of McCall now.
You get a T-shirt.
You get McCall number 10.
You get a, Cynthia already has her T-shirt, but you get a T-shirt. What about Kate and John? And Asaf, who has really stepped up in a major way and been spearheading a lot of our sponsorship efforts, bringing in the money, of course, without which it wouldn't be what it is, and we wouldn't be able to give back to the schools. So just wanted to start out with some gratitude. And let me turn it over to you.
I also wanted to tell everybody, to echo what you guys were saying, how great our students are. We've had the pleasure to deal with over 40 students as interns this summer. They all have valuable skill sets, varied skill sets, and they are already willing and able to work. It has been super impressive. We had an intern meeting this evening, and one of my interns was like, "So I have a lot of work to do, and I just don't know if I could create the summary tonight? Can I do it tomorrow?" I'm like, "Oh, my God, school has started. She's already still doing our summaries." I taught her how to deal with our AI note taker, and these kids are working with spreadsheets. There's a sixth grader that said to me, "I'd like to help you with spreadsheets." And I'm like, "Oh, man, I'm going to have to teach this kid." He comes over, he was teaching me things. I had no idea what he knew. And these are the kids that go to school here. So thank you for educating them. My kids are long gone. My kids are almost 30, down to 23. So I still do this because I love this town, and thank you for encouraging everybody as well. I wasn't supposed to be the only thank you person.
Just want to extend the invitation to everyone else in the Board of Ed to please join us on Saturday, and to let everyone here know, and anyone who's watching at home, that we do have a signup genius, one for adults and one for students. So everyone is welcome to join for as little as an hour and as much as the entire day. We will be in Taylor Park from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., so we would love to see you.
We need clones. So I know already we have two clones up there. Those are two McCall's. I have 20 Joannas running around, but if you want to be a captain, you can be your own person. You'll get your own name on an orange shirt. So please, become a captain. It's a goal.
So I just want to, you know, yes, reiterate everything that the gals have said. Between us, among us, we have nine kids who have gone through the Milburn School District. They have all either, they have all graduated. None of them are serial killers that we know of so far. Many of them are employed and have graduated college, or, you know, and living their best lives. So we are eternally grateful to the school district. Now I transition to guilting the heck out of y'all. We could not, the Education Foundation and the PTOs at every level, every school that we have, are literally responsible for any innovative program, or technology, or equipment that are in the schools. If you're here, you're invested in the school district, in the kids' education. You know that the school budget pays for our wonderful teachers, it pays for our buildings, it pays for benefits, but there's not a lot left over for extras. So when you're looking for state-of-the-art video equipment at Studio 462, or state-of-the-art robotics equipment that has, you know, helped our kids go on to become like world champions in robotics.
Adventure Ed.
When you're looking for adventure education that Mr. Connolly really liked, you know, we had, the Education Foundation has really just given over $3.5 million back to the schools over the past 30 years. We don't do a lot of events anymore. There used to be lots more events. This is pretty much the big one. And we don't need to sell you on the event. You know it's a fun event. You know you'll have fun, you'll bring your kids, everyone will have a great time. We need people to write checks. We need people to go on the website and click on the button, Milburn Education Foundation, and give us the money that we can give back to the schools. That's all we, that's all we're asking for. There are school districts in the country, out in California, McCall's sister was telling us about one, that literally have every parent in the school district, you know, write a check for X number of dollars to augment all the programs. We don't do that. We don't ask people to be members anymore, per se, but everyone who lives in this town can give back something, can give something. It could be a sponsorship level where your family sponsors, it could be any amount. But if you do that, it would really help, literally just give back to your own kids. So if you're going to shop local and you're going to dine local, you can donate local. So we would really appreciate that. I apologize to the four people in the room who heard my spiel at the Township Committee meeting, but I do want to say that one of those people gave me a check. So that was a very nice thing. So we are happy to take your money. Thank you so much.
I just want to know, is that a karaoke machine right there to practice in?
Yes.
Thank you, Rocktoberfest team. Next comment, please.
My name is Jeffrey Feld. I live in a poet's section at the beginning of the foundations. And I don't know who that person was who was really persuaded and twisted at the TC meeting to make that donation, but I ask you all to follow the lead of me at that meeting. First off, there should be a shout-out about what was published today, Star-Ledger, that they just showed the results of who had the highest average scores of the SATs in the calendar year 2023 to 24. We were ninth, but we were the only really public high school. Everyone that was ahead of us was like a charter school that attracted the best students of the county. And I really, I mean, we should be shouting that out from the mountaintops. Also, I want to thank Mr. Assistant Superintendent for giving us the update about the students who have gone out, because I don't know if it was distributed today, because I sent to the superintendent an opinion, it's a binding opinion, talking about what's happened in Lakewood and the impact on budgets when all the students go into private and secular private schools and the impact on the budget. I hope that opinion will be distributed to all members, because there also is an important footnote to all public officials, explaining what willful indifference means. I like to bring up some things that happened at the last meeting. I don't think your minutes are accurate. There was a, there were four walk-on resolutions. The minutes don't reflect that they were walk-on and you approved them, because three of them involved financials. Also, at the last meeting, I pointed out that you needed a certification when you're doing the finances, not from the superintendent, that you really should be from your interim BA. Tonight, if you look at your agenda, you rely on a certification of your board secretary. Again, it's financial, it really should be your interim BA. During this gap period, who will be the parliamentarian? Because we don't have, like we had before, you know, this board knows about Oprah and Open Public Meetings Act, because there was a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. It might be, people say, who cares? But there's some things that are broken windows. You can't walk on non-emergent health and safety issues in the middle of a meeting in the summer that involves financial matters without telling the public. But that's, that's your dog bite warning going forward. As to AI, we're all in the same boat. We're all going to be learning together. The last 45 days, you know, you read about universities talking about going back to Blue Books and testing, but the one thing that a lot of professors are talking about is critical thinking. You know, that you have to read the papers, and one of the things they've known because of technology, and I think some nations are knowing, that student, people aren't reading anymore. Maybe they're reading in class, but they're not reading for pleasure, or they're not reading, you need to get the news from newspapers and not from social media. And again, I implore everyone to make a donation. Benefited my children when they were here, the Education Foundation, go into your pockets. I won't be here on Saturday, because I have my annual pilgrimage where I escort my wife to Cornell Law School, where she sits on the advisory board, but I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Feld.
Richie Seibert, South Mountain resident. Very simple. Is it ever considered to introduce any vocational classes in the high school? I have so many friends that are so successful in this town financially, but can't use a screwdriver. It's funny, but it's true. And it's a good, it's good to know those simple lessons. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert. Any other public comments? And then we'll move on to board action items. Instruction agenda items. May I have a motion and second to approve instruction items 1A and 1B? Ms. Longley Richards, Mr. Lawrence, roll call. Oh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bithena?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farishudin?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich?
Yes.
A motion passed.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the personnel report? Mr. Bigman, Ms. Shavani? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bithena?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farishudin?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve business agenda items 3A through 3I? Mr. Farishudin, Ms. Bithena?
Just, that's 3E. 3E, might be a typo.
May I have a motion and a second to approve business agenda items 3A through 3E? It was Mr. Farishudin, Ms. Bithena. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bithena?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farishudin?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve the two policies for first reading and the two for second reading and adoption? Ms. Shavani, Mr. Farishudin, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bithena?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farishudin?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Any board members have old business to discuss? Ms. Bithena?
Just wanted to point out on one of the comments. We do have three very thriving scouts programs in our town. They're not quite vocational programs, but they teach kids all the non-academic skills from plumbing, you know, and name it. There is a merit badge for aid, as Ms. Longley Richards got to see this weekend. So yeah, we have three amazing, and if anybody's interested, they can see me, they can see Ms. Shavani.
Thank you, Ms. Bithena. Any other comments? Ms. Longley Richards?
I just wanted to make a comment on the, on the Rocktoberfest thing, that our headliner is a Coldplay tribute band called Fix You. So anyway, come out, come out for the run.
No kissing, anybody's word.
No, there's gonna be, okay, there might be a kiss camp.
Any new business for board members? Second round of public comments. Same rules apply as first time, if anybody's interested.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Rosen. I live at 21 Dryden Terrace, and I realize I haven't been here for a while, so I don't have a boombox, but I just wanted to say thank you. I, I just... I, I just want to say thank you to the board and to Dr. Diskin and to Mr. Connolly and to everyone who made all these changes. There are many of us that have been asking for a long time. And I just want to thank you for doing the analysis. I want to thank you for listening to the students and the parents and the teachers and for having the courage to dig in and see what was, was happening. And then the transparency to share the data and information. And thank you to the teachers, especially and to the administration. I know it hasn't been a straight line, but I just really want to say thank you. And I also have a senior again. And on the first day of school, was really lucky to see all the first day of school activities and to see the spirit of the school and all the 341 kids in the same blue shirt taking the picture. So it's just a wonderful place and community, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. All right, if there are no other comments, we'll move on to the board candidates. So at this time, I'll invite the three candidates for the board vacancy to approach the podium and provide a public statement or introduction about yourself. Each person will have a three minute limit. Upon conclusion of these statements, the board will go into executive session to discuss the candidates. Upon return from the executive session, the process will be a board member makes a nomination to appoint a candidate. A second of the nomination follows. There may be numerous nominations. Once the floor is closed to nominations, a yes no vote will occur on the first person nominated. If that person receives five yes votes, that person is the one appointed and no other votes are taken. If the person nominated first receives less than five yes votes, the BOE would then vote on the second person nominated. This would continue until a candidate receives five yes votes. I also wish to note that the swearing in of the board member cannot occur until the new board member has submitted to a criminal history background check. Upon proof of submission, the board member may be sworn in. Was that correct, Mr. Stars? Was any other procedures?
That was correct.
Fantastic. So we will move ahead at this time. Was there a predetermined order in which the candidates come?
There is not.
So you're leaving it to me?
If you'd like to go alphabetical, you can go alphabetical.
Okay. Who would that be? Spelt, Wang, and? Oh, yeah, it's, it's. Ms. Wang, I believe you are first after this deliberation from this esteemed body.
Dear Board of Education members, my name is Weiwei. I'm also running for the BOE this year. I would like to apply for this BOE vacancy policy position. Since 2024, our school district has gone through a period of notable changes. Several long-term administrators, including the superintendent, the high school principal, vice principal, and the multiple elementary school principals have moved on to other opportunities or retired. Teacher turnover has noticeably increased. The district has also updated how certain roles and responsibilities, mainly related to the department chair and instructional supervisor positions are organized. Recent enrollment reports show an increase in transfers to private schools, particularly after eighth grade. Change only scale can bring both new opportunities and genuine challenges. Trust and morale, communication breakdowns, cultural tensions, capacity and skills gaps, uncertainty and the sustainability of changes. It is a chance to try new approaches, but it also requires thoughtful planning to ensure transitions are smooth and the focus remaining on students and the students' achievements. If appointed, I will work to help the district navigate these changes and the challenges with transparency, collaboration, and a steady commitment to maintaining the quality of education that draws family to Melbourne. My priorities focus on setting up strong and effective governance with accountable oversight for our schools. Transparency, accountability, communication, and collaboration. Number one, ensuring important decisions. Follow a clear, inclusive, and accountable due process by incorporating input from educators, families, and educations, and considering the full impact on our classrooms. The process for addressing issues and identify, identifying solutions should be based on rigorous, thorough, and sound professional research analysis. Significant changes should, should be welcomed indicated in advance, and the stakeholders buy-in should be sought to the greatest extent possible before implementation. Number two, supporting stability and continuity for our schools and students to maintain the quality of teaching and learning during times of transition. During periods changes, teachers and students' feelings could be easily overlooked. We must remain focused on their experience and outcomes, listening closely to concerns and ensuring that any adjustment lead to positive results and improved placement over the long term.
You can just finish your thought and that's close.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Every student from those with exceptional academic abilities to those requiring additional support or special educations serves should be given a environment in which they can strive and reach their full potential. Number three, encouraging open communication by providing, by providing clear explanations for decisions, inviting feedback from all stakeholders, and measuring progresses through tangible metrics such as student outcomes, staff rotation, enrollment trends, and other key indicators.
Ms. Wang, I just had mentioned, finish your thought. You had three minutes.
Oh, okay, I just, sorry, I, I almost done. We should welcome concerns. Sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, you can't go past time. We have to be fair to all candidates. Ms. Speltz?
Hello, my name is Abby Speltz. And I'm also asking that you consider me for the current vacancy on the Melbourne Board of Education. I am currently registered to run in the election this November as well. And I believe my skills and experience would be valuable to the board and to Melbourne students. And I think these skills also would enable me to quickly get up to speed and contribute meaningfully. I have a strong track record of leadership, service, and engagement in our community. I've been advocating for the students of Melbourne for well over 10 years. I've been on PTO executive boards across the district and have been actively involved in the Melbourne Education Foundation for over eight years, among other projects. I've attended almost every board BOE meeting and forum for years. And with a current high schooler and an MHS alum, I have personal insight into the impact of the changes made so far, having witnessed the difference between my two daughters' experiences. This work and experience has given me the opportunity to thoroughly understand the strengths and the challenges of our district and to develop relationships with educators, administrators, and families across our community. My professional experience in communications and process management has helped me mobilize the community and foster positive change. While I love all of my current roles, if selected to fill this vacancy, I would immediately resign from those positions to focus solely on the BOE. I'm fortunate to have a super supportive community who stand ready to take over in my absence. As an added benefit, this is, as an added benefit, I would have significant time and substantial flexibility to dedicate to a role as a board member. The board has made incredible strides in revitalizing our schools. I'm excited to continue this progress and to ensure the mechanisms are in place to maintain forward momentum for all future students. So we can ensure every student leaves Melbourne well-prepared, resilient, and confident. I'd love to start this journey as soon as I can. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Speltz. Mr. Gervenek?
Okay. Hi. Good evening. I'm Gisela, a Melbourne resident, mother, teacher, and student. Passionate about ensuring every child in our district receives an exceptional education. For three years, I've advocated for changes that expand students' opportunities, and I'm excited to work with the board to continue shaping a bright future for our schools. As a mother, I've raised three wonderful children in our, in our district. My eldest, a Melbourne High School graduate, now excels at the top university. My rising senior balances academics with volunteers, volunteering in the Melbourne First Aid Squad. And my youngest, an eighth grader, is finding his path at Melbourne Middle School. Early on, their experiences revealed outdated policies that limited student potential, inspiring me to advocate for a dynamic, equitable, and empowering education system that we are starting to see now. Inspired by my children's experiences, I became a dedicated advocate for ensuring that every student in our district has access to an educational experience that is dynamic, equitable, and empowering. As a teacher with a background in actuarial sciences and roots in Argentina, I teach math and Spanish to students of all ages and capabilities. I, I prepare students for magnet school admissions and SAT success. And I've collaborated with Melbourne, sorry, with Montclair State University to design an innovative Spanish curriculum integrating emerging educational theories and technology. This experience equips me to modernize our district offerings. As a student pursuing a master's in Spanish linguistics, I understand the rigor and stress students face today alongside the transformative role of AI in education. This equips, this unique perspective as a parent, teacher, and student enables me to ask the right questions that drive meaningful change. My priorities include extending student-centered policies to our middle schools, middle school, mirroring successful, high school practices. This means refining grading approaches and creating flexible pathways for students to take on challenges, make mistakes, and grow confidently. I'm committed to write policies that will help create curriculum that reflects students' interests and prepares them for tomorrow's world, ensuring they are ready and empowered. As someone wisely remind me recently, serving as a board member is not about having all the answers, but about asking the right questions to the right people and ensuring that those questions lead to a meaningful action. Last one. If not tonight, then in the upcoming election, I ask for the community's support and your trust. I will work tirelessly to represent the best interest in our children and will do so with integrity, honesty, and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the board will now go into an executive discussion to discuss what we've heard. May I have a motion and second to enter into a closed session at this time? Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Bigman? All in favor?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We're now in executive session. Where are we off to?
Tech Room.
Okay, let's get started. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for the three people who came out and spoke tonight. It's great to see interest in running for and even going for an open position on the Board of Education. We certainly need all the help we can get. As a reminder, I'll call for nominations. Once all nominations are in, we'll move to the voting phase. The way it works is the first person who is nominated gets voted on first. If that person gets five votes, the voting is done. The others don't come up. Just to clarify the procedure. Okay, so I will now open the floor for nominations to fill the board vacancy. Ms. Longley Richards, I saw first.
I would like to nominate Ms. Abigail Speltz for the position.
Lawrence, thank you. Any other nominations? Mr. Farasudin?
I would like to nominate Gisela Torgovnik for the Board of Education opening.
Second for Ms. Shavani. Thank you. Mr. Finkelstein, a third. Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? All right, nominations are closed at this point. Ms. Speltz was first. Can I have a, you'll do a roll call, Mr. Stars?
Yes.
All right, let's do the roll call on Ms. Speltz.
Ms. Patena?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farasudin?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Yeah, that's five, right? I think we can stop.
It is five.
Congratulations, Ms. Speltz. I believe Mr. Stars will be reaching out to you and going through all the details. All right. Moving right along. Oh, I guess that's it. May I have a motion and a second for adjournment? Ms. Longley Richards, Ms. Patena. All in favor? All right, thank you, everybody, for staying until the end.